Because of the fact it was illegal for so many years, I mean, a lot of our efforts were towards that, you know, interdiction. I would welcome that, and I think every chief would, that, you know, knowns are better than unknowns. And I think it's much, you know, as I've seen my testimony, that those unknowns sometimes put us all in unsafe situations. I think the other thing I just wanted to throw in, there is a metro link the DHHS has. I'll give an example today. I checked six names at lunchtime, the people that I know in my community are medical marijuana caregivers. Three of their names came back as not registered. So we need to also look into that part of the system as well. They're working on it and getting it to us, but it isn't.
Are there any additional questions for Chief Grayson?
Yes.
Sir, Mr. Sanders.
You mentioned the metro link. Is that incomplete because of it's not having the correct information entered into it? Has caregivers registered?
I would say either it's the timeliness of that, but in this case, some of these people have been in my town for several years producing, so I find it hard to believe. So I'm not quite sure why, whether they've been changing the system. As we know, sometimes when you update systems, you lose information. But I know that it is not correct and it's not helpful in any way.
Not correct as in you know the ones who came up as long registered actually are registered?
Yes, yes. So, I mean, obviously, if we stop somebody in the middle of the night, they give us a card and run them through the lane, you know, we're left to wonder whether that is truly a document that's, you know, a gentleman or not.
Thank you. Does the committee have any additional questions? Seeing none, thank you. And we'll proceed with proponents, those people in favor of any one of these bills, and the line has begun. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is John Kruger. I'm representing MoMACA Board. I live in the town of Northport. I come before this, let me just say, body with a background in science and administration, representing the Maine Organic Farmers and Gardeners Association. I'm a board member and chair of the MoMACA Certification Services Management Committee. And my background, I've got degrees from MIT in chemical engineering. I'm the past director of the DHHS State Health and Environmental Testing Laboratory, with experience oversight in multiple disciplines, including forensics, and sort of the leader in the National Public Health Association across the country. I mentioned this just a document, the scientific and science and professional rigorous that MoMACA looks at this topic on cannabis. Just as background, you know, MoMACA has nearly 11,000 members committed to safe and healthy food and other products grown in Maine. Now, we've had many people come to us seeking that we certify cannabis. And just a little more examples, small-scale farming is on the increase. Maine is becoming a mecca for a new generation of talented and dedicated farmers. It's an example right now, Maine ranks number one in New England in agricultural sales. But what's really interesting, too, is the fact that over the last five years, the number of young farmers under the age of 34 has really soared almost 40 percent. We're really looking at some really new generation of farmers. As example, over 30 percent of the farmers are women, which is also unique for this part of our country. It's now commonplace for Mainers to shop at farmers' markets, participate in CSA, seek out local produce, seek out the healthy food at our schools. MoMACA takes pride in stating there are now more than 450 certified organic farms in Maine, producing some of the highest quality, safe, local, and sustainable food and other products grown in Maine. Many of these professionals believe that they can also produce cannabis with the same quality. I'm personally leading a discovery trial program right now with MoMACA that we call MC3. MoMACA claimed cannabis certification. We can't use the word organic because of, you know, federal requires. But this trial, you know, represents many requests that we've had to see if, in fact, you know, we can develop a program to assure patients and caregivers that this cannabis product is what it says it is and that it's safe. We've got many people, medical marijuana growers, caregivers, medical professionals, laboratory representatives, and organic certification specialists on this team. And regardless of whether MoMACA continues this discovery process or whether others choose to do this, there are significant costs associated with certification. I think that's one of my points here, is that this doesn't come easily. And also, you know, meeting with independent caregivers, I'm aware of a professionalism associated with their work. Many of these independent caregivers are developing boutique, I would call high-quality cannabis to meet specific medical needs. As an example, there are growers that are developing these CBD strains, cannabinoid dioxins. We don't get high from these. They have noted before it affects little THC, but have been shown to have, you know, tremendous, you know, medical advantages. So as a scientist, I'm aware of the considerable resources needed to develop these unique medical strains and the documentation needed to assure safe production. So I'm coming before today because I believe it's a disincentive for caregivers to expand the considerable resources to become certified or use significant resources to develop unique medical strains when their market base is limited to five patients. This isn't a good business practice. You know, it's, so rather be a number of plants, I mean, you know, as we decide on, when we set the number of plants to a number and we say a number of patients is a number, what we're encouraging is people to produce the most concentrated plants they can. And so the laws that you make actually influence the industry.
Thank you very much.
Happy to answer questions and hope I can participate in more sessions.
Be pleased to have you here, Mr. Kruger. I'm sure you bring a, you have a good amount of information to the committee. Are there any questions for Mr. Kruger at this time? Seeing none, thank you, and appreciate your offer of being here for the session.
Senator Haskell, members of the Joint Standing Committee of Health and Human Services. My name is Mark Crockett. I'm a caregiver here in the state of Maine, and I'm here to speak in favor of LD 1258. There seems to be a lot of confusion with respects to what the law is, what the language is. I've spent a lot of time meeting with different members of the medicinal marijuana industry, law enforcement, members of legislators, members of dispensaries, caregivers, and patients. I firmly believe that we live under a 30-plant law with respects to the number of plants we can grow. We must maintain five primary patients in order to have those 30 plants. If one of those patients leave, we must replace them or destroy those plants. Obviously, being a businessman, of which I paid a license for, spent a substantial amount of money to build my business, I obviously don't want to destroy plants. So I'm in the business of making sure my patients are satisfied. However, with that said, patients have choices, and that's our number-one priority are the patients. If I cannot provide them with the strains they need, I have a crop failure, I don't make the edibles that they need, they have a right to go somewhere to get that medicine. I may be able to provide them a portion of what they need, but they still have a right to go somewhere else, and it has to be our common goal. Therefore, patients come and patients go, and we live under that law. However, the law is interpreted by many different people and in many different ways. I'm here today to say that I would like to run my business under how I perceive the law, which is I can grow 30 plants and with those 30 plants provide as much medicine, quality medicine, as I can to my patients. Now, with that said, we also operate under, basically, a cloud because we haven't accepted or worked with supposedly DHHS and their need for enforcement of quality control and public safety. It's really not the truth. We're open to that. We've been open to that all along. It's just that if we go along with all the requirements of a legitimate business in the state of Maine, background checks, license fees, regulations, inspections, taxes, then we should be able to operate as a legitimate business in the state of Maine. I really feel that that's something that's time has come. It's time for everybody to realize that we're a business. In fact, we're probably the majority of the industry in the state of Maine. We're well over 1,000 farms, many of them are small farms, but we're a huge part of the industry. There's many, many big corporations coming. There's many, many people trying to support legalization for recreational use. We're up against that. We're up against giant corporations that exist here now in the state of Maine. They have unlimited patient rights. They have basically then unlimited rights to grow as many plants as they want to if they have unlimited patients. We have a 30-plant law. We'd like you to recognize that, give us the opportunity to work under those conditions and under those laws. We're open to law enforcement. I've met with them. We're open to inspections, quality control, and public safety. In fact, we support it because it's not inevitable that legalization for adult use is going to happen, but it looks like there's a very high possibility. And if we don't take care of what we need to do under the medical marijuana structure, we're going to be in a real bad place if that gets passed in the next couple of years because we have nothing at this time. But please, respect us as businessmen and women. Respect us as professionals. We're well over 1,000 strong. We create a lot of jobs. We want to be able to do it with taxation and with employees that are legitimate and work with us to move this industry forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crockett. Are there any questions, Mr. Crockett, at this time? Seeing none, thank you.
Senator Haskell, representing the team and members of the Health and Human Services Committee, my name is Laura Herper, and I'm a senior associate with Moose Ridge Associates, and I'm speaking to you today on behalf of my client, the Maine Association of Dispensary Operators, or MEADOW. We are the trade association that represents Maine's eight licensed medical marijuana dispensaries. And my remarks today are going to be focused on LD 726, Senator Savia Loes' bill. Thousands of Maine people now have relieved from a host of debilitating medical conditions thanks to the eight medical marijuana dispensaries MEADOW members operate in the state. With a physician's certification, patients with cancer, HIV/AIDS, Lou Gehrig's disease, Crohn's disease, Alzheimer's disease, post-traumatic stress disorder, and other conditions may access medicine that is demonstrated to improve their quality of life and ability to function. Medical marijuana diminishes suffering for our families, friends, and neighbors. Maine's dispensaries are all small, not-for-profit Maine businesses run by professionals in patient-focused settings and with missions dedicated to providing safe and clean medical cannabis to the patients they serve. 100 percent of our product is Maine-grown, and dispensary operations are strictly regulated by the state of Maine. And it is with this in mind that MEADOW approached Senator Savia Loes last fall to share our concerns about the existing inequities playing out in Maine's medical marijuana program. LD 726 and the proposed amendment offer several changes to Maine law that we feel will increase patient safety and help raise the standard of medicine and strengthen the integrity of our industry. As Maine experiences a period of rapid growth in the caregiver community, it's crucial that our laws and regulations keep up. What began over 10 years ago as a few hundred gardeners growing cannabis to select patients from their communities who were suffering from debilitating conditions has exploded into a significant and unregulated cottage industry. Whereas our two-tiered system for caregivers and dispensaries may have worked in the past, now we are flooding the market with essentially unregulated medicine and private and lethal many times under-the-table transactions. Before patients suffer from tainted medicine or we continue to feed the illicit market for marijuana, Maine's laws need to be rebalanced to provide the appropriate level of oversight and enforcement in the caregiver program. For the medical marijuana industry, regulation is welcome. For far too long, cannabis growers and consumers have had to hide and conduct transactions in alleys and parking lots, perpetuating assumptions and stereotypes about this plant, its uses, those who grow it and use it. As an association, we know that the degree to which dispensaries are regulated is a significant factor in Maine's medical program, having been rated the nation's best. We encourage you to embrace this success and use this bill as an opportunity to strengthen the safeguarding and enforcement in existing law. Furthermore, as you'll see in the proposed amendment, hopefully it has made its way around. I apologize if it hasn't, but we'll get that to you. We'd also like you to consider two other things. The first, increasing the annual limit of excess prepared marijuana a caregiver can sell to a dispensary will help create a more transparent market for the extra product many caregivers end up after bountiful harvest. We welcome the opportunity to enter into more business relationships with caregivers who have grown quality medicine in safe conditions and who don't object to safety inspections or the standard sales and purchase paperwork required when we perform such a transaction. Additionally, we'd like to ask you to make one last housekeeping change. Under the current law, dispensaries can only buy or sell from each other when there is an inventory-supply interruption. We are finding this challenging to determine satisfactorily with our regulators and have agreed that we prefer to not have this as a condition of sales and purchases. This would allow dispensaries to source products and strains they do not already cultivate that prove helpful to certain ailments like those high in CBD to help relieve epilepsy. Dispensaries will be better able to serve their members with specific strains that would be helpful for certain conditions that the otherwise do not have access to in the short term. I see I'm almost out of time, so I want to just note that when Senator Savia Loes presented the bill, he mentioned fiscal note, in his large fiscal note. Part of the language that you see in the bill is allowing the existing funds within the Maine Medical Marijuana Fund to be used more appropriately, we think, in enforcement. And that, we put that in there because of conversations we've had with our regulator. They said that they didn't feel like they had the latitude and existing statutory language to use that fundage to further enforcement mechanisms, so we have tried to put that language that would allow them to do that into the bill. So thus, you see a fiscal note where they are using that money on enforcement. So I don't think it's dead on arrival, as the senator said. I think that's a good thing, so I would just turn your attention to that as well. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions? All set? Thank you. Looks like we're almost done.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dan Brown, formerly Farmer Brown. I am a caregiver down in the Blue Hill area, and although I spend many times seeing different listed with me, I would just start this by saying that medical marijuana saved my farm, without a doubt. We were in a different industry and having some struggles, and one of our people asked us to grow marijuana, was totally, knew nothing about it, just another thing, and they talked me into it, and I came at it from that angle. It was just another crop to me. Put tomato on the ground, put cannabis in the ground. I knew nothing about it. I don't smoke it, I don't, anything like that. It has now become the focus of our lives and our farm. We love it, we enjoy it. Growing it is a challenge, it's enjoyable. I really like it, and I guess I come at this testimony from that background. I'm speaking in favor of LD 5 and 1258 because the cannabis is becoming more and more of a part of our farm, and the restrictions of the five patients and the six plants, it's just really keeping, keeping me down and allowing it to become more of a focus of what we do. I have now have five patients under my care. My wife now has her license, and she will be maxed out. And we literally have a stack of five people on a waiting list that we want to work with. So this, if we had LD 5, it would allow me to sign them up and allow them to work with us. I'm one of the people that Ms. Russell was talking about. I can get over three pounds of marijuana per plant if I do my job right. I did that last year, and when it was just me, and I have no reason other than to do it this year with my wife and going forward. There's no way the people that I'm working with can use that much marijuana in one time. But I'm good at what I do, I grow things. So if I had the opportunity to get more patients, that would allow me to make more revenue, make a bigger part of what I'm doing, and be more successful. And I think that allowing me to have more patients also allows me to work with more local people, allows me to keep more of the local business. I'm not against dispensaries, but it's just a little bit of a different aspect, different thing. I hate to turn somebody away because they only use a few grams a week, a few grams a month, but I can't justify bringing them on as a patient because of their usage, and I have to say I'm sorry that you need to go work with the dispensary. And so LD 5 would allow me to work with more of those people and open me up a little bit on that. 1258, you know, the onsite visits, I have no problem bringing them on. You know, we test everything, everything's evaluated. I have no problems with, you know, I obviously in the past didn't like regulations and stuff, but when it comes to the law, I totally understand bringing people in, inspecting what we're doing, getting licensed, got my pesticide license, we're doing all that. I'm just saying kind of take the cuffs off. I'm following the rules, we're paying our sales tax, we want more employees. I grew, when you have 30 plants, they grow over two pounds to three pounds a plant, you go to a harvest sign, my wife and I are the one doing it, and we milk the cows at 5:00 a.m., then we start right onto the cannabis. It's too much, we can't do it, we need more help. If you're just doing cannabis, it's one thing, but we're milking the cows, we're feeding the chickens, we're doing the garden, we're running the farm stand. I just can't do it without more help. What of industry is they only allowed to hire one person, and then I pay for the right to hire that person, and then I pay them a wage. Let me hire more people to help me. Thank you very much, Mr. Grayson.
Thank you. I'm looking to Mr. Kruger, any questions? Mr. Bush, do you have any?
Farmer Brown. Sorry, I always stuffed it, right?
I almost didn't tell you.
Good, good. What did you do with your excess now? Did you give it away?
We did actually give some away. We have, we make it into, in the edibles, yeah, I don't want it. The edible side of it is in a big part of it. Where we were growing, we haven't run into a dispensary because I had my license, I grew more, but now we're adding patients with my wife, but I'm anticipating in the future, as next year when we grow 60 plants instead of 30, then I can't add any more patients. What am I going to do?
Right.
So this year, because I was, I'm new and I was gaining, it wasn't as much of an issue, but if I do my job right, next year it will be an issue. And it's not really good business to keep a product, you know? I like helping people. We have a few people that just can't afford it, that are on, you know, limited income, and I help them, but as a business standpoint, it doesn't really make much sense.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Welcome back.
Hello again, I'm Jovi Stevins, I'm from Augusta. I'm going to speak out in support on a few things. LD 5 and also the component of LD 1258 that runs sort of concurrent with LD 5, I think that that is wonderful. I think it's a step in a great direction for patients, what that means to me as a patient. It means that caregivers, they're only going to take on people that are coming close to maxing out because being a caregiver is an expensive process. So me, as a low-income patient, I would be able to then be taken on by one of those caregivers with really quality product that normally wouldn't be able to afford to take me on as a patient because I can't, I just can't max out. It's not an option for me. I go through a much smaller amount than a lot of other patients do. And it would open up for me and people like me to be able to have access through a legal route to that medication in smaller amounts. I know the response to that is, well, dispensaries will take you on for smaller amounts. Guess what? They cost an arm and a leg. It's cheaper on the black market than it is at the dispensaries. I can't afford it. So it would be a move in the right direction to remove that limit from the thing, with keeping the plant count the same. I think that's perfect. I want to, just plain say, LD 66, absolutely, absolutely. That's just safety. And then on LD 1258, I am in support of most of that. I think that the 24-hour notice for inspections is the most reasonable that we've had, but with these plant cycles, it's important to keep in mind that there are times of the grow cycle where the lights tend not be turned on. It will shock your plants, cause them to hermaphrodite, and degrade the quality of the medicine you're producing. So it might be more effective to try to schedule them at a time where the lights can be on. And that's all for now.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you. So, can I second stop for a second? So again, the issue of the overflow room, I think appropriation is open for folks here. We're way beyond where we should be at this time right now, from a safety perspective. Again, you know, if you're waiting to testify, you know, should understand we're going to be here for quite a while. People can wait down in the hallway, they can wait over on the second floor of the state house in the appropriation, and we are broadcasting in there, so you will be able to hear. So again, it would be great if you find a way to, because I'm just really limited to the number of people for our actions. So, I may ask you to try to, uh, honor that. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Ken Seer, and I'm from Rumpford, Maine. I am a patient. My son's caregiver. I became a patient first, realized I'd have extra marijuana left over, didn't know what to do with it. It was in the early stages of this process. My son came home, didn't have a job, decided to be a caregiver, that'd be a good thing. Then we ended up with too much marijuana. In the beginning, it was give it to the local police. Well, I come from Rumpford, and that wouldn't be a good option at all. I might be met halfway and I'd be in jail. So I am for LD 5 and LD 1258. Love to be able to get rid of our excess to patients that want small amounts. Have been turning down a lot of patients because of small amounts and they can't afford it. As caregivers, if all 1,750 of us had five patients, we're putting in well over 2 million into the system. 120,000 up from the dispensaries. We're kicking a good fair share. And that's, would like to have a little bit more fair money box, this registration and everything else. Don't mind being inspected, but the people inspecting us have to know the process. I can't have somebody coming from one grow room with spider mites, walking into mine, inspect it, and then leave, and all the things that, good, things aren't good anymore. If they're close, I can't do too much to them if they're close to Biden and I have to harvest them. They're gone, I got to get rid of them. Everybody else knows that, too, here. Same thing with anybody else coming into our place, electrical contractor or anything like that. When I have somebody come in and try to do something in my rooms, I have them put a paper suit on, get rid of the paper suit when they leave, dispose of it. I don't want them bringing any contaminants into our room. As of the LD 766, electrical permit. Now, he mentioned commercial, we have to have commercial wiring in our residential house to make this work. If that's the case, it's not a cheap process. It's going to cost quite a bit more. I just rewired everything, you know, was residential, am I going to have to change? And just kind of the final words, just going kind of everything right here. Most of the rules that we are proposing are reactive, not proactive rules. We're thinking back what's happened in the past and looking forward. State of Maine is going to be looking at legalization right down the road, and we should be looking in that direction of what type of rules we should be having and how we can get ahead of other states. You know, other states are doing this, and if they do it too close to us, we're going to be probably looking at somebody else coming in and trying to run our state. I was in Colorado just a little while ago. I went to a number of dispensaries. Everyone says, oh, boy, you're from Maine, you're going to open something? You want to work for Maine? I'll come over and, no, I don't want to work for you. This is our state. You did it in your state. It's, I guess, let's make things fair, and we out where the jobs are, and let us grow. I think we can do really well in this state.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Is there any questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
Good afternoon.
Representative Gutierrez, members of the Health and Human Services Committee, my name is Keith Errett, I work for Balance Medical Marijuana Laws for Maine. First, I just want to start by saying, you know, basically, the whole reason why we're having this conversation today is to make businessmen and women a legitimate business in Maine, I think you've heard that from some other people, and I think you'll continue to hear it today. I think, you know, the idea of the sell what you grow is an important one, and the reason being whether you agree with legalization or not, whether you think it's going to pass or not, or something will get out of the legislature this session, having a conversation about a system that already exists, that's already been approved around the medical marijuana industry, and it's going to set a process to go into the legalization in the future, I think that having that conversation on all these bills now is very important. We are here in support of many of the concepts laid before this afternoon. LD 5, we like the concept of that bill. Senator Saviano's bill, we agree with the inspection pieces, and we agree with the concept that if you're going to be seen as a legitimate business in Maine, you're going to, you know, inspections, paying your taxes, abiding by the rules, and making balanced medical marijuana rules that dispensaries have to abide by, we agree with all of that. In return, we want to be able to be seen as a legitimate business moving forward and being able to sell the product. Like you've heard, it's not good business practice to give away your product. The bill that we're here, we think is the best vehicle for that would be Representative Sanderson's bill, LD 1258. I think it addresses the major concern of being able to sell what you grow. I can't think of another business where you hand off your excess and then you try to stay in business and you try to hire additional employees, which are important, but you are limited in what you can sell, and as I've spoken to caregivers and my client, you know, different people can grow different amounts, different people can grow different product quality. One of the things in Senator Saviano's bill is increasing the two pounds to five pounds to be able to give your excess to or sell your excess to the dispensaries. We agree with the concept, it does help, but it's still not going to be the sell what you grow, and they should have the right as a patient to go and get a different product from different caregivers and different providers across the state. The biggest, what I'll leave with you guys with, is we're trying to create a partnership between the department, between the caregiver community, between the dispensary community, and most importantly, between law enforcement, we know that their hands are tied, we want to work with them moving forward, and we want to create a relationship to a body doctor. So I'm happy to try to answer any questions. Also, I will be here for the work session, as will my client, and if you guys need anything, I'm in the halls.
Thank you, Mr. Errett. Any questions? You're all set.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Hello. Do you have a card? Do you have a question? Do you have some questions? Okay. Do you see a support sheet for 1258?
Currently, the Maine Medical Marijuana Program is one of the most robust in the nation. Sorry, Aaron, my name is Aaron Worthing, I'm a small business owner in South Portland. The Maine Medical Marijuana Program is the most robust in the United States. I think the caregiver program has a lot to do with that. I'm not a caregiver, I'm a patient, and I believe that the program has grown so much that the current restrictions, the five-patient limit, as well as other restrictions, are a direct conflict of the spirit of compassion. Farmer Brown mentioned a wait list, that is a wait for someone to die list. There's, you know, not a huge turnover, if you find a great caregiver, you want to retain them, but you can't tell your friends, you can't recommend this great caregiver because they're already at their max capacity. Caregivers have to make decisions not based on the best use of their medicine, but who are the five bell cows that will pay my bill and make this, you know, business worthwhile? That's, as I mentioned, is not in the spirit of compassion, and that for caregivers to realistically have to make that decision of who can pay my bills, they're the most worthy patient, is not, it's not what we should be doing. Currently, caregivers pay into the system with tax and licensing, more of a three-to-one ratio than the current dispensaries, so they should be rewarded for their robust nature of their cash collection and give more outlets to be able to sell what they grow. I think that's a great term, is if you grow it, you should have a safe away for it to go, to get to patients, stay within the medical system. There's several bills that allow for a safe away, I believe that 1258 is the clearest step towards what the regulated legal market is going to look like, and will help prep the current caregivers to step in that direction if they choose to do so. I don't think the regulations on inspections are overly burdensome, but it's to step in the right direction, and all the caregivers kind of need to prepare to do this paperwork and have this level of exposure as we get closer to legalization.